Hello and welcome to Discovering Grayslake, unveiling the stories and people that make our town so unique. I'm your host David Wool and I'm thrilled to bring you this new podcast that explores fascinating stories and experiences of local business owners and community leaders. Right here where we call home. Grayslake Rehabilitation Center is a community-based private practice physical therapy provider. Do you know they have 13 clinical providers with various levels of specialties including orthopedics, sports, neurology, vestibular, geriatrics, pelvic floor, and aquatic? What? Did I just say they have a pool? Well, they do, and it's the largest indoor warm water pool in Lake County featuring two underwater treadmills and swim currents. And recently added clinical treatment specialties in layman's terms, shockwave. They have both radial and focus units that are the newest tool in regenerative medicine available to everyone. They pride theirself on the most current and up-to-date specialized care to keep you moving. If you're looking for physical therapy, make sure to see our friends at Grayslake Rehabilitation. All right ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to another episode of Discovering Grayslake. We are recording here at Agora Co. working on the corner of Atkinson and Center Street. Shout out to these guys, shout out to Luke for letting us record here, appreciate you buddy. If you're looking for a space to get out of your house with your office for a day, for a week, or even a lifetime home for your business, Agora is a great, great place here. And if you haven't been here, come just check it out and take a walk through. So I think this is our episode, Discovering Grayslake episode 90.
Hey fantastic.
I know.
I like that.
It's great.
I like that.
Ninety's a good number, so I'm with Stephen Mack, how are you buddy?
I'm good, thanks for having me today.
Oh, it is a pleasure.
Appreciate you inviting me in, yeah.
Okay, so it's funny when you, you know, I'm like the who's who of Grayslake and I go through and do all this stuff and we like, cause we got the opportunity to talk to the mayor and all of these, all of these organizations that come through and people that are doing great things. But is it, am I correct in saying this, are you the president of the school board?
That's correct, currently I serve as the president of the District 46 School Board. So as you know, Grayslake has two separate districts, one for the high school, 127 and District 46. So currently I'm serving as the president and I've been on the board since 2016.
Okay, so what kind of insane person wants to get involved with the school board?
They ask questions of that a lot, yeah, yeah, there's, that's probably the first question that people ask. And in fact, even when we, if we attend a meeting or a workshop or a conference for school board members, even, even the school board members probably ask themselves, what are we doing?
I would think, I would think so.
You know, what are we doing? And I'll tell you one thing, I'll tell you, the reason why I got involved in the school board was a, because of what the school district has given to my family. And so, and I mentioned this to you when we were chatting before we started recording, I have three children, two have been through the district, one is still in the district. My oldest daughter has a significant disability and so when we moved here, she was born here in Grayslake. And you know, Illinois does not rank high amongst states for educational opportunities for children with special needs. Just generally speaking, I think some current rankings has it as number 48 out of 50, right? That may fluctuate by a state or two here and certain parts of the state might be different, but when, when she began her, her education, Grayslake was a pot of gold. It was just a, a place where she was welcomed, where we were welcomed as mother of her. And she was our first child and so we were younger parents, right, 25, 26 when she was born. And you know, having your first child and then having that rare condition which is called Joubert syndrome on top of everything, you don't know where to go. I mean, you're, you're trying to learn as you go along and then school becomes a big decision. And from the moment that she started in the early education program, which is typically for students who are at risk of something, whatever that might be, right? All the way through when she graduated eighth grade at Park Campus and then went on to District 127 for her high school career and then partnered up with CEDOL, which is a great resource here in Lake County.
Yes.
It was just a place that she was valued and she could be herself with everything that came with it. And the district treated us as human beings and not just as, as individuals that needed an IEP plan, okay, we gotta do this, we gotta do this, we gotta do this. They talked to us, they cared about us, they cared about Isabella, they cared about her needs, they worked with her and us to make sure that she had the things that she needed. And so, so much was given to our family and then of course my other kids as well, the same way. This is the only way that I figured I could give back.
Wow.
And so that's why I got involved. And so with everything that comes with being on the school board, my, my why is giving back.
That's awesome.
Through my service.
That is awesome.
Right.
And it's, it takes a special individual and the gratitude that you show, I know it's, it's a huge thing.
I appreciate that.
And those people that, that helped out to do things, cause growing up my sister had disabilities all the way through and I said, and it is a serious challenge. I can't imagine what it would be like for new parents, especially your first one.
Right, right, it's not like you know that a whole. Yeah, it's like, whoa, we're gonna go straight into this. And, and her particular, the particular syndrome she has has a, has a wide variety, a wide spectrum, like a lot of, as you know, a lot of different disabilities. But she's non-verbal, so on top of that, you know, there's, there are times when, you know, she's not able to, she's not able to tell us how her day was, right? So we don't get the type of information that we might get from our other two children or, you know, from a neighbor who will talk to you about how their day was. We relied heavily upon the staff and the teachers and the administrators who were not only fantastic and brilliant educators, but loving human beings. And they knew how to communicate with Isabella and they knew that inside what she was going through, whether what the challenges were, was somebody who was just trying to communicate and get across her, her voice.
Right, wow, okay, so sitting as the president with this kind of history for you probably makes you an excellent president because you can understand what people, and everybody has a challenge, right? Whether how big or how small it is.
It doesn't make any difference and you know, education is a, not only an opportunity to learn, but it's an opportunity to discover, it's an opportunity to find your voice. You know, we, we, I know my kids.
Are you looking for a great time right in the heart of our awesome community? Well, look no further than the Grayslake Village Center, your one-stop destination for all things fun and fabulous. Picture this, historical downtown vibes with a mix of diverse businesses, an array of unique shops and delicious restaurants, many with outdoor seating with an option to soak up the sun or shade. But that's not all, the Village Center is where the action is and just like the weather, it's definitely heating up. There are events that take place all year round for the whole family, but now you'll even have more options. Fill up your calendar with things to do. Also take a stroll through Central Park, Gelatin Park, surrounding trails, green spaces, and more activities to keep you and your friends and family active all summer long. And now that the weather is warming up, dive into the Aquatic Center, open Memorial Day to Labor Day. But wait, there is more. Visit GrayslakeVillageCenter.com to discover an incredible lineup of events that are happening every month. Be in the know, not sure what you're waiting for, so come on down. Soak up the local vibes and enjoy the experience that's unmistakably local and uniquely Grayslake. Grayslake Village Center, where the fun never stops.
Do this as well, when I ask them at the end of the day, hey, how was your day? Oh, fine.
Right.
Right, you know, you know, what did you learn? Oh, nothing. But on the inside of that, and I see this with my students as a teacher, on the inside of that, there, there are those micro and macro changes that are going on and they're finding their voice. And you know, education in all of its forms, no matter whether you're in public education or private education, parochial, wherever you are, it's an opportunity to find that voice. And you know, for, for someone with a disability like my daughter, that voice is harder for her to get to. But with the staff and the teachers who love their students, truly care for their students, those things happen, right? And so, you know, serving as the president or even serving as a board member and my other colleagues, my, my, there's seven of us, right? So my six colleagues, one of the things that drives us is ensuring that that opportunity is there in the best way possible. And that comes with all kinds of challenges.
Sure.
It comes with all kinds of yeses and nos and can we do this, can we do that? Yes, no, everything that you can think of, every idea that, that, that can be discussed is discussed in those types of, of environments. And so finding the voice is where I, I thought I would best serve in that role.
That's awesome, okay, because I don't know a whole lot about, and the reason I love the show is cause I get to ask some of the questions that maybe seem obvious to other people. So, school board, main function of what you do, and what kind of decisions are you making, like the big decisions that are on the school board's lap?
Right, right, so the, so, and, and my colleagues and in fact even if you come to a board meeting, you might hear me beat this drum every once in a while. The, in, in my view, and mind you, when, when I'm speaking by myself, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. We speak together when we're sitting at the table, right? So this is my perspective and it's very important to, to kind of clarify that, right? Because board members do not exert any authority except when they're at the board table and they have the vote before them, right? When they're out in the community, they can talk, they can have opinions, they can share with you, you know, anybody, any board member you want to ask a question to, totally fine, right? But when we're, when the decisions are made, they're made at that, at that board table with that vote and each vote is equal, right? No matter what role you're serving in. So my, my vision of a, of a board, and this, this is for a school board or for any board that I volunteer on, is governance. The, the board is that big picture type of entity. What, what do we have and what can we do with that?
We're taking a quick break just to say hello because everybody knows Nano and Nano knows real estate. And actually I believe that's the name of her Instagram page, so if you're looking to buy a home, sell a home, or know somebody in the market for a home, contact Nano from Baird &amp; Warner. She's a Grayslake girl helping out Grayslake people.
And how do we develop the relationship with the superintendent? If you, whom you've interviewed.
Right, and I think.
This episode, Dr. Glickman.
I think Lynn said, I'm like, well, who's your boss? She's like, the school board.
The board.
Yeah.
Right, and you, you make a good point and that's really interesting and I, and I think a lot of questions I get David is, is, you know, well, oh my gosh, you know, the school board must have so much power or you must get, you must get paid a salary for being on the school board. Which, no, it's all, I mean, you, when you serve on a school board, it's volunteer work through and through. In the state of Illinois it is. I think there are some other states that might have stipends or stuff like that, which we could talk about later, which I totally disagree with, but this is all volunteer work, right? You, you choose to run, if you're elected, you're serving as a volunteer, that's, that's it. And so, the government, and so, when you go to some of these other meetings that we go to, if we go to a workshop which are held throughout the year, which board members can do some extra learning at, the, the, the common thread is you have one employee as a board. Your one employee is the superintendent.
Right.
Right? That, that ensures that the board is acting as a governing structure and is not necessarily always in the nitty-gritty of everyday operations. And they shouldn't be, that's the superintendent's role and in this case, her team, Dr. Glickman's team, right? They, she of course will report to the board, the board can question, ask questions, talk, whatever they need to do. But at the end of the day, her team is, who is making sure that the school's operating daily.
Right.
And the board will get its, get its updates and take care of the larger decisions.
Wow, okay, so give me an example of one of those larger decisions, like what's like.
Well, anything you want to talk about, I mean, the, the large decisions are of course, you know, spending on transportation or certainly the referendum that came through recently in the, in the most recent elections, right? That was a big decision when we first started that process that involved a lot of conversations with the community, making sure that we got feedback, making sure that we had a committee that involved people throughout the community to give the board information, to say, yes, we will go for a referendum. Or no, we won't go for a referendum right now.
Gotcha.
Right? Certainly, you know, things that come up like when GMS had to move to GMS East, right? Those are things, mind you, Dr. Glickman and her team, you know, Mr. Smith, all of the teachers, the staff, they are the incredible individuals that made that happen.
Yes.
I brought coffee for them.
You brought coffee.
And several of my colleagues came in and brought treats and we offered to help in any way we could.
Right.
But the, the enormous lifting that was done by that team was all the staff and the teachers and the administrators and family members who pulled together to make that happen. We had to make the larger decisions to say, yes, we can, we should go there and we'll support you and this kind of stuff.
Right.
But that was all, all them.
Yeah, and I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go on record again to say that I don't care what anybody says about that, how they feel about it, they're, oh, we're taxpayers or whatever. With the, the speed that that was executed, I don't know how it happened.
I'm not sure I could have done it. I, I don't know if, if I was in that role, if I was in Dr. Glickman's role or Mr. Smith or any of the, any of the administrators in that building. I, I, and I know myself well enough and, and I love to be involved and organized also, I don't think that, I'm not sure that I could have pulled it off. I mean, my, my awe at what they did, to make the kids safe, but to also make sure that learning continued and that we didn't necessarily fall back on remote learning, which is not always what it should be in many cases. But we continued to have a physical space was fantastic.
Yeah, and, and e-learning at that point would almost be the easy way out there, right?
For sure.
And you guys seem to really wanted kids in the classroom.
Generally agree, I would generally agree and, and to give those students an experience, and you know, of course, my, my son was in that process. To come back and be like, hey, I was at a college campus.
It's kind of fun, right?
Cool, you know, something a little bit different, freshens their eyes a little bit, gives them a little bit of a new perspective on what's out there. So maybe as they're going through high school, maybe they're like, hey, I like that place, I'm gonna go there, you know, kind of move on, it's fantastic.
I think it was also a good lesson in, you know, shit happens.
Well, it does, no.
And you pivot and you'd make the best of things, right?
You, you have to, and, and you have to pull together and you have to, you know, we have to take care of each other.
Right.
Because if we don't take care of each other, then, then, then what is, what is our purpose?
Right, you know, and the funny is those kids are gonna remember that.
Oh, sure.
They're totally gonna remember and that'll be the class.
You know, our, I mean, our families and stuff will remember COVID, we will remember this, it's those milestones, it's those epic milestones that, that, that move along.
Yeah, I think the one thing, and then we can move on from it, but when they did the, when I was talking to Lynn about how everything was moved, there's so many things I didn't understand, from changing the kids' schedules to organizing bus routes for that many kids. And how many kids were walking there too.
Moving pieces, yeah.
Like how, how.
How do you do that?
Yeah, how do you do that and how do you do it so fast?
I am grateful, I am grateful to all of them for the amount of work and time and blood, sweat and tears that they put into that process, it was fantastic.
Yeah, cause it could have been an enormous failure too.
Sure.
But it turned out.
You'd never know.
And you'd just do the best you can.
That's it.
So I tip my hat to everybody that was involved in that because.
So those are the big things, to kind of the big things, you know, obviously the board, you know, other things that come to us, the budget of course is the biggest thing. To make sure that the school can operate, so you know, you know, annual, well, every meeting, we have two meetings per month typically. And you know, every meeting, there's some type of financial update or something that is, that we have to think about or talk about and discuss. And each, each board member has their own, you know, set of questions or ideas that we can field out to the administrators or people who are there at a board meeting. But there's a lot of work that happens too before a board meeting where we get the information in a packet so we can read it and get ready and prepare. And some meetings are longer than others, some are shorter than others. We get to honor students, which is super fantastic.
That's cool.
Uh, you know, they get to come in and if it's a, if it's a sports team or if it's an academic team, it's fantastic. And one of the things that we started doing this past year was also inviting two eighth graders and it rotated between Park and GMS to sit with the, to be, to be board members for particular meetings, right? So they would, they would sit on the board, they would sit at the board table and they were considered, you know, the student representatives to the board at those meetings. And I think we're gonna continue that program in this next academic year.
That's really cool.
Which is super fun, we've been wanting to do that for a long time. Both of the schools work in their way to, to get the students on a list to kind of rotate through. And we had some brilliant ideas coming from the students in terms of.
Really?
You know, how they viewed education or what they thought might be better in their building or, you know, some of them were talking about the, the length of the school day or the length of the school year or what it means to be a leader or, and, and that's just encouraging because they're, they're thinking about what it means to maybe one day sit at that board themselves or somewhere else.
Right.
Right? Which is, which is great.
Wow, and any kind of leadership role like that where you're.
Yeah.
Well, that's cool, that's got a really different perspective.
Pretty neat, totally.
That's a great idea.
Totally, graduation is another big thing, we get to, that's fun, we get to be there handing the diplomas, it's good.
Wow, yeah, cause you know, and board, uh, school board meetings are open to.
They are, oh yes, they're public meetings, right? They're, they're public meetings, they're, they're meetings held in public, but it's a business meeting, right? So the board has to, has to get its work done, but it's held for transparency in a public space. So public can come, they have question times, in, in our particular district, we have a question time at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. So if you come late, you'll, you'll have another opportunity to make a comment or ask a question, or if you come at the beginning, you can ask a question or a comment.
Do a lot of people come to that?
It depends.
Yeah.
It depends on what's going on.
Right.
Right, there, there are, there are times, there are meetings where it's, it's just us.
Right.
There are other times where it's, it's more, I mean, you can imagine during COVID, it was more.
So you, were you the, you're the president during COVID?
I was not the, I was the vice president during COVID, during most of COVID, right? And so we, that, that was a lot more.
Yeah.
And, and then there are times when it's just, it's, it's quiet. So it just depends on what's going on and what's on the radar of the community and we, all the, all the board meetings are also recorded on YouTube, they're streamed on YouTube during the meeting and they're recorded. So they're all there to link if anybody ever wants to go back and, and, and watch them. And then on the District 46 website, there's a link there as well as a link to the minutes. So the information is all out there so that we can share the story of what the board is doing.
Right.
And if anybody, you know, has any questions, they, they, they are invited to come and share with us.
Which is good and that's a nice way to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a volunteer position.
Yeah.
But, so how does one get on the school board? Like how, how do you get there?
You run, yeah, you run, well, there's a couple of different ways, but you know, there's, 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 there's two different ways to get on the board. One is you, you run in a typical election cycle and it's usually in the municipal elections, which are always in April. So for example, this, you know, next year, we have the, the presidential election in November this year, but the municipal elections for school boards and such are in April of '25.
Hey neighbors, this is Bill Mock with the Grayslake Chamber of Commerce. And if you're looking for a network of hardworking, customer-focused and generally friendly local businesses who are dedicated to helping each other succeed, then I'd like to invite you to check out and consider joining our Grayslake Chamber. We offer our members so many ways to advance their businesses through social networking events, special event sponsorships, informative luncheon learns, and the ever-popular after-hours mixers. Come see why we say we're the new wave of business here in Lake County.
So you, you can, you can, you sign up with the Lake County Clerk, you circulate petitions to get signatures, you know, you need 50 signatures to get onto the ballot.
Okay.
Right, and then you're on the ballot and you share either on social media or you share in the community, you set up meetings if you want or coffee talks or whatever to share with the community what you, you know, what, what you're thinking about and why you want to serve on the school board. Another way to end up on the school board is to get appointed and that happens if there's a vacancy, if somebody resigns or somebody moves away and they can't fulfill the duties anymore. And then you're appointed by the, the sitting board members decide then who will be appointed. There's an interview process, you could submit your resume, we bring you in for an interview and then determine, and then you would finish out the term typically roughly the term of that person. A little bit shorter than the term of that person because the state has rules for you to run again.
Okay, so how long can you serve?
So for, so for example, if you, so a term is four years. So if, if I run in April and I'm elected, then, then my term then would run to 2029.
Right.
If you're appointed to the board, it's a little bit shorter because you're not gonna fill out the, like, so if somebody is elected, they're not gonna get the whole four-year term. State law will require that they only have two of those four years and then they have to run again immediately.
Yeah. Wow, so is there, is there a term limit?
Uh, no, there's no term limits.
So.
People can run as many times as they want.
Okay.
But it's four-year terms and it's staggered, so not every board member is up for election every.
Gotcha.
Cycle.
Are you, are you gonna run again?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
I think so, I think so.
Sure.
I, I, I find a lot of joy in it. I am really humbled that people, you know, have said, yes, we would like you to serve.
It's an honor.
And it reminds me every time I think about it, you know, you know, on, on the election night, you know, when you get, you know, you see the, you can look at the Lake County and you see the, you know, people voting for you.
Which is great.
You get like, you know, I think 1,200, it's a smaller election, right?
Right.
And I'm like, it's an, I don't think my wife votes for me or I'm not sure if she's told me if she voted for me or not, but I don't know if she does or not. If she listens to this, then we'll have to see.
Yeah, well, I'll ask.
I'm not sure, but, but it's, it's an honor and it's humbling because it's, it's, you know, these, these kids and these, these teachers and the students and the families, you know, a, a community is made up of all of these different pieces. Businesses, you know, podcasters, restaurants, you know, village trustees, schools, homes, everything. And we're all pulling this, this, this chariot together.
Right.
And it's great.
Yeah, and that's one thing I've learned doing this podcast is like, and what specific roles and how everything like, it's like a automobile, well, if one thing's broken, then it affects everything else. But it, everything needs to run right to have something, things go smooth.
Everybody has a story.
Amen.
And we, we have to, we have to listen to those stories and it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference where that story is coming from, but to sit down and actually listen to somebody. That's why this podcast is brilliant.
Thank you.
You're telling the stories, you're not, while you're not telling the stories, you're giving a space for the people to tell their stories and that's really, really important.
I really think it is.
You know.
And it's amazing, things that have happened by people sharing their stories, by giving them a voice.
That's the thing, because the voice, that's what we're all, that's what we all want. Plus we also want to know that we're all okay with each other and we're, we're taking care of each other.
And the most satisfying thing I get is when people come in or I find them very interesting and come in, they're like, well, I don't have a story, I'm not that interesting. And then an hour into the episode, they're still talking.
Yeah, you do have a story, you definitely have a story.
We mentioned, we mentioned your, you mentioned your wife and we're gonna find out who she votes for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So when. Or not, so I was looking through photos on, on the book of the faces and for opening day at school and you had all the teachers over at Park.
Yes.
So then I see your, your picture, you know, addressing everybody. And then, oh yeah, you were on the video.
I was.
And then I see your wife there, Denise, right?
That's right.
And Denise is president of Foundation 46, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
You guys are all kinds of involved, man.
It seems like it, it seems like it, we were just, we were just talking about this the other day, we were just talking about this the other day and I, you know, I, my father, who's 83 now, one of the things that I remember very vividly when I was in, in grammar school and high school was his, he was an accountant and worked in the banking industry for his whole career. But he was always volunteering and I always admired it. He would tell, he was going to a board meeting or he was heading to an event or he was serving on this board and he still does, even at, at, at an older age, he's still serving on the board. And I, and as I moved into college and started my own life, it, it called to me to emulate my father. And, and I always tell him, I share with him as often as I can, that I do some of these things, cause he'll ask me the same question, he'll ask me, you know, why are you on the school board?
Right, are you nuts?
He's been on boards of, you know, like, you know, nonprofit foundations and stuff like that, like, you know? And I'm like, well, you know, this, you have inspired me to do this.
Great.
And it really goes back to everything that we've been given, you know, Denise and I have talked about this, you know, we, we like to volunteer, we like to be involved, but it's busy and we have a busy home life as well with, with the three kids and especially with the needs of Isabella, right? But we, we do it because it's, it's, it's our, again, it's our way to give back. I mean, we, we feel loved and valued and, and embraced by the community around us, you know, and people will, will come and visit Isabella, you know, it's, it's harder for her to make friends, right? With, with that, she doesn't have the traditional group that, you know, the rest of us grew up and have as we move through life. And so people who come to her to tell her that she is loved too is what drives us to volunteer. So she hasn't always done the foundation, that's just fairly recently, but she was involved with the PTO at a couple of schools and, and, and stuff like that, so.
That's great, yeah, no, it's, it's cool and it's fun to see like, cause the percentage of the population that actually volunteers.
Yeah.
Or does stuff is, as we know, is all is very small.
Sure.
We preach on here all the time, volunteer, go do something, go, volunteer to coach a little league baseball team, volunteer to do this, do the pancake breakfast, like, cause it takes a village so to say.
It sure does.
You know, we always say that and I giggle and go, well, it.
But it does.
It really does.
It does.
So with that, it's nice to see your family doing so much.
Thank you.
So, I, well, we appreciate it, thank you.
Fills us and, and we, we, and it, it also gives us a chance to share our story, but we take in so many stories too. Because even if you're not volunteering for a, for an event or coaching or whatever, you know, the, the people who will take the time to come by and visit and be with Izzy or be with us or share their stories with us or. come by and visit and and be with Izzy or be with us or share their stories with us or text me on the phone and say, come here and talk is is wonderful. It's it's a big part of this community.
It's cool. And I don't think people understand too by volunteering, um, how much you actually get out of it yourself.
Yeah, don't you?
Yeah.
I I you grow.
Right.
You you grow.
Yes.
You can't help but grow.
Right. And you meet like-minded people that are doing the same thing.
That's right.
Which is also a very cool thing. All right, I want to know a little bit about, um, we're gonna do our uh hot seat questions here within a second. But I want, before we do that, I want to know a little bit um about your past, like, where did you grow up? Go to school, how do you get into?
Yeah.
Because you're obviously a teacher as well.
I I am a teacher, and I and I that that's pretty much been my entire life. I don't, another thing my wife reminds me of is that she's never really known me outside of school, whether that be teaching in school, serving for the school board or whatever, that has been my life, right? I grew up in Palatine.
Okay.
Uh, went to Palatine High School, Go Pirates, right? Uh, graduated in ninety-two, so it puts me, you know.
I know.
We're getting there. We're getting there.
Yep.
I I went to college at Northwestern University, um, you know, had a blast there, and I was, I I teach French. Um, but I've I've been a teacher of multiple things too, and I went to University of Illinois for my master's degree in French and teaching. Um, and then did my PhD in education and then a master's degree in education, so I've got a couple of, I've got a little collection.
You like school.
I do like school, and and it's been a choice, it's my choice, and so I I don't, I don't have any regrets about it at all. For most of my career, so I've been teaching for, I think, what did I say, twenty-three years?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Um, so for most of that seventeen years, I was a a college professor, so both that. I started at McHenry County College on a faculty there, and I was a department chair. Then I was down at the University of Illinois for a visiting professorship, and then I was at Dominican University in River Forest for a couple of years for a visiting position. Then I landed for about eight years at um the Chicago School of Professional Psychology.
Okay.
That was not French. I had been hired as administrator there, so I was the director of adjunct faculty. So I was hiring faculty and mentoring them and training them and all that kind of stuff. Then I moved over to the faculty there, not for psychology, but for um research and writing and helping students move through their dissertation process, right?
Cool.
Uh, that was a great place. I really loved that school. They had some downsizing, and around two thousand eighteen, I found myself in the first ever experience of not having a job. Um, and uh Wakanda High School in Wakanda, Illinois reached out to me, I had some contacts there, to be a substitute teacher.
Okay.
And I said, you know what? Sure, until I get back on my feet, I'll head on over there and substitute teach. And I fell absolutely in love with the place. Go Bulldogs, right? I gotta be, I gotta go, go Central Rams, go Wakanda Bulldogs, right? I got, I got both. I have a dual dual citizenship, as it were, right? Um, and and during the time that I was subbing, while I was still trying to kind of maybe get back into the university uh environment.
Right.
I became aware that the French teacher there was retiring.
Mm-hmm.
So serendipity played a role.
Right?
And so that was about six years ago now, that would have been in the, well, five, I guess, so the fall of two thousand nineteen is when I started there, so I'm in my sixth year, I guess.
Wow. Okay, how how different is that?
Oh, man, it's it's hugely different, but incredibly rewarding. And I think I just, I think I just, obviously, I just, I love the 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 teaching part of it.
Right.
But it's so different. You know, you know, college is is, I mean, you've got people who are there at all ages, from a typical freshman in college being eighteen or nineteen to adult learners that are coming back for, you know, something else, and they're independent, and they just kind of come in and out or whatever. But high school, man, the energy is fantastic.
So you like it a lot?
I love it. And and we've grown the French program there, which is not typical. You know, French, number one, French is not, I mean, it is a a one of the big world languages that is studied around the world. It's like the fifth or sixth largest language that's studied. But i- in Illinois and sometimes in many parts of the United States, it's not often the biggest one. It's kind of the smaller language, generally speaking. You know, and we had, we had started, I, when I started there, gee, I think I had eighty-seven students enrolled, and now we're, now we have two hundred and twenty students enrolled.
Are you kidding?
Hired a second French teacher, and so it's it's just fantastic.
I would never guess that.
It's fantastic.
I would never guess.
And I love it, and I, you know, and 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 Grayslake Central has a fantastic, and Grayslake North have fantastic world language programs. Um, I'm familiar with the teachers, I haven't met all of them yet, but they're they're fantastic educators. My son is taking Spanish, my daughter's gonna take French. It's just a, it's just a fantastic environment, and, you know, you've got the football, you've got the, you've got the, you know, they just, they just launched Girls Flag Football in its inaugural season.
How fun is that?
Which is fantastic. IHSA put that out there, and it is, it's booming, so it's great.
Move by them.
Yeah, it's great. It's fantastic. Um, and my son is playing soccer at at Central now as a freshman.
Yeah, so you're you're a new soccer fan.
Both, yeah, so they're they're gonna play each other, Wakanda and Central will play each other, so I.
Where are you gonna go?
Well, I have a hat of Wakanda, and I've got my jersey, my sweatshirt as as central, so.
Gotcha.
I gotta rep both a little bit, because my, several of my students are on the team, so.
Okay, any of these kids playing against your son?
Oh, they will.
Oh, yeah, so.
They will.
Okay.
So that'll be interesting, one way or another.
That'd be really fun. That'd be really fun.
But you know, what what the high school environment has given me is just a vitality. You know, the kids are energetic, and they want to be there, and they want to learn, and they have good energy, and they have challenges too. It's a, it's the whole gamut. Um, and you never leave the day not exhausted, but also you, I leave every day fulfilled.
Great.
Which is, which is great.
Well, and what more can you ask from a child?
Yeah, yeah.
And if you can actually say that.
High school came to me at a time in my life when I needed it, because I had, I had lost the previous, they they eliminated that position. And I was kind of like, uh, I don't know what to do, because I've never been in this situation before. And they came around, and I'm like.
Things just work their ways up.
It's somehow.
Yeah.
Somehow.
It's kind of fun.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and and what are the chances that you go there and the French teacher is le- leaving?
That's right. That's right. That's right. You kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just, there's some some universe.
Right.
Message.
My buddy and I call it the thin threads in life, you know, like those little tiny things that just change everything. Like, you never know, because who knows what you'd be doing if if they didn't downsize, they didn't.
That's right.
Get rid of you.
That's right. In my mind, I would still be there. But then I would have missed this entire chapter of vibrant color in my life.
Right. And and. The vibrant color of purple and yellow.
Purple, that's right. That's right. That's right.
They're enemies.
Go Rams.
Right, right, right.
We're gonna be clear here too.
The green and white.
Clear here too.
Green and white podcast, man.
That's right.
Green and white podcast.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, so what an interesting journey of like how you go through all that. That's that's fun.
It's fantastic.
That's awesome. All right, so um have you listened to a lot of podcasts of mine?
Uh, I have listened to several of them.
You obviously listen to Lins.
Well, I listen to Lins for sure. Um, I don't remember some of the other ones, I I'd have to go back to my.
You know, we're going through, and I was, we're we're making a list because coming up on um with a hundred episodes um coming, it's it's really fun to look to say, even I've forgotten, it's not not forgotten though.
I have to do an audit too, because I gotta go back and remember what we've done too.
Exactly. It's kind of one of those like, okay, let's make sure of that. Um, all right, so obviously, when I said hot seat, you know what I'm talking about, so. Um, so this is gonna be Stephen Mack on the uh Grayslake Hot Seat.
The Grayslake Hot Seat is brought to you by Joe Velez at JPV Financial. It's often said that those who fail to plan are planning to fail. Joe Velez and his team at JPV Financial create unique financial plans that address some of the most difficult challenges that people might face as they get older. No matter what stage of life you're in, having a proactive financial plan can help navigate some of the difficult decisions you'll face, helping you live your life by design, not default. Securities and investment advisory service offered through Osaic Wealth Inc., member FINRA, SIPC. Now for the Grayslake Hot Seat. Hey, thanks, Joe.
I'm gonna try to skip around a little bit for you.
Yeah, go for it.
I always say that, but I know.
No, whatever.
Do you have a hidden talent?
Oh, geez, um, that's really interesting. Probab- my gosh.
Is your wife going, yes, you could do this?
Yeah, he does, yeah. You mean like, like doing the sounds under my arm or something like that?
My seven-year-old just learned how to do the armpit fart thing, yes.
I don't think I've ever been able to do that, no matter.
Let's not start today.
What, yeah, we're not gonna do it on the podcast, because that's gonna be a whole new.
That'll be a whole other episode.
The colleagues are gonna ask me, what are you, what are you thinking?
Way to represent, Stephen.
I don't think, I don't know if this is a hidden talent or uh um just part of my professional training, but I think I'm just, I think languages come easily to me. I teach French, but I can, I can navigate very well in Spanish and a couple other languages that that just come to me.
Interesting.
And it's just kind of, it's almost a wiring that that.
Mine's the opposite.
That I can, that I can hear and see and figure out what's going on, so. I don't know if I would, I don't know if I ever really harness that as a talent.
Right.
Um, but certainly something that certainly, well, yeah, 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 maybe what, maybe so.
Interesting. Did you play a sport in high school?
Uh, I played tennis.
You played tennis?
For a semester, and that was it.
Really?
I was more on the academic side.
Okay. All right. Well, you like school.
Yeah, definitely, that's that has been.
Proven that.
My life.
Um, first car you ever had?
I had a white two-door nineteen eighty-five Camaro.
Nice.
It was nice.
Eighty-five Camaro?
High school. Eighty-five white two-door Camaro named Betsy. It was my stepmom's uh car, and when I got into high school and she 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 gave it over to me as a wonderful gift. Um, and and I enjoyed tooling around in it my junior and my senior year uh before it finally went kaput. But it was, it was fantastic. Two-door, white, nineteen eighty-five.
I was just talking to somebody saying.
Spoiler on the back.
Isn't it funny like how vivid the memories of my first car?
Oh, for sure.
That's why we gotta be careful what we do.
And if I have any of my buddies who are, of course, are still around, listen to this podcast, they will, they will, they will remember exactly where we were, exactly what we were doing, where we were driving to, in Betsy.
That's awesome.
That's right.
Um, if you had a superpower, what would it be?
Uh, oh, this is a good one too. I think I I I think flying. I I I think flying, I I know that might be a canned response for many people, but there's something about it that gives me uh a sense of pretty incredible freedom. Uh, and the funny thing apart about it is that I'm not, I'm not a really good flyer, I don't like it all that much.
You don't like to travel in the air.
I, but if I, but if it was my superpower, I think I would feel different about it.
And you would be in control.
Right. My father did a little stint with a friend of his when he was still working, he got his private pilot, private pilot's license. And him and his friend, they they had a a four-seater. Um, and and he he was really proud of this, and of course, he invited me to go flying with him, and I did a couple times, and he would take me up to Lake Geneva or Springfield or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, these jaunts, and every time, you know, it's a little four-seater, right? So you only really need to get up to like sixty-five miles an hour, seventy miles an hour for the thing to.
Take off?
Getting enough lift to get up there, right? But before, when we were taxiing out to the little runway wherever we were over here at Campbell, or he would fly over out of DuPage and you know, he's like, he would stop, he's, we'd have our headphones on, he said, Stephen, he's like, this button here. He's like, if I have a heart attack up there at six thousand feet, you press this button, they'll help you land the plane. I'm like, Dad, if you have a heart attack up in the sky, we're gonna be on twenty twenty.
Right.
Yep. Because I am not gonna be landing the plane. So I have this, a little bit of this fear of flying. But when I watch things like Superman or Iron Man or any of those ones that have that, as a superpower, I think it would be totally different to me.
Yes.
Another one might be time travel.
Yeah, I think time travel, after all.
Time manipulation, that that kind of thing, like Doctor Strange, you know, that kind of thing, you know, that would be a good.
I like that you're a Marvel guy, by the way.
Like that, yeah, right, right. That's right.
Place you'd really like to travel that you have not been?
Oh, gosh, I would absolutely love to go to China. I have not been to China. I would love the 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 age of that civilization, thousands of years old, and the significant impact it had on architecture, on art, and writing, and 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 language, and all this, and food would be fantastic. I would love to visit China and the Great Wall and and Beijing and you know, the hillsides of China, like the like the remote, less less urban areas.
See, that's what I would go to.
I would love to go to China. Oh, yeah.
Well, you can fly there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll let you know.
You'll be, you'll be fine.
That's a long flight.
Um, if you had to write a book, what would it be about?
Uh, I have this book uh rolling around in my head.
All right.
Um, and I've, I actually have a notebook that has probably thirty or forty pages drafted of it that I've just written a page here, a page there, literally over the past six or seven years. Um, and a working title in my head is turbulence. Flying theme, if we will.
Let me see.
But but it's a, but it's, but it's exactly what we've been talking about, the the ups and downs of telling your story and what life has to to throw across to you. My dream book would be uh like a magical realism or a magical fantasy book that would be a bestseller, and I could retire.
Awesome.
So you never know.
Awesome.
That might happen.
Um, I know you're into books, we're gonna touch on that a little bit also. Um, if you had to have a theme party at your house, what would it be?
Uh, it 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 would be French, it would be Paris. Eiffel Towers and and croissants and, I mean, the people who know me well, I am a full-blown Francophile, uh, you know, lover of all things French. It's just been, I don't know why.
How many times have you been there?
It, I lived there for a number of years prior, in in college was the first time I did my, you know, study abroad, and then I lived there for a couple of years after college, and then traveled back there frequently, so we're going next year with students from the high school on a on a trip in the summer for a ten-day trip. My wife and I have not been there since since prior to COVID, so it's been a few years for sure, um, but I'm anxious to get back.
How, how fun.
So, yeah.
Wow. Um, favorite Grayslake event to attend?
Uh, probably, uh, no, well, there's two probably, uh, and maybe I'm cheating on these questions. But the Grayslake Days that just happened is a phenomenal event. It is brilliant, and they they know how to put it on, the parade is great, the the food, the restaurants, the people gathering and everything like that, right? And then the the Bourbon Festival that is sponsored and and hosted by uh by The Vine and Mike Pruitt, it's fantastic. Yep, we'll be there.
Love it. Um, okay, have you ever eaten a roller dog from a gas station?
I love sandwiches from gas stations.
Gas station sandwiches?
Thank you.
Isn't there a Chevy Chase line, like, I'm so hungry, I can eat a sandwich from a gas?
A gas station?
Right.
I love gas station sandwiches. And and Denise thinks I'm out of my mind.
Hey.
I will pick, if I have an opportunity and I go in and it's there in the little cooler there, and it looks like a good Italian sub or ham and cheese or whatever, I grab one, they're great. So there you go, Grayslake.
That's fair.
Well, by, at the gas stations.
That's the fun fact about you. I think everything except for egg salad, I'll have.
That's right, yeah, I might avoid the egg salad, maybe.
Um, you have a go-to karaoke song?
Uh, yeah, Su Su Studio by Phil Collins.
Nice. Um, tell me about an award that you've won.
Um, I was uh recently nominated for Lake County High School Teacher of the Year.
Awesome.
Uh, at the event that was held out at the Lake County Fairgrounds. Uh, at the event that was held out at the Lake County Fairgrounds.
Yeah, yeah.
By the Regional Office of, of Education. Um, I did not win my category, but it was the, from, I mean, it was pretty incredible to, to have that nomination and they, all the nominees got a plaque, um, all that kind of stuff.
That's, how does one get nominated for that?
Uh, your colleagues, your people in your school will, will nominate and send in the packet. So it was a huge surprise, um, and a really big honor.
That.
Yeah, it was really, really cool, really fun.
Yeah, when you look back at stuff, like, hey, just because you do what you love and obviously you love what you do.
And it was, it was great.
And to be recognized, that is huge.
It was great.
Um, tell me about the second time you were, you were arrested.
Never. That was a quick answer.
Yeah, you were.
Thank God.
There was no editing in that, by the way.
No, you leave that in as it was.
Never, I'll leave it right like that. Okay, so how many days can you wear the same pair of jeans without washing them?
Uh, well, I don't like jeans.
You don't, you didn't get a jeans guy.
So, cackies or dress pants.
Okay.
Or shorts.
Most people have no idea what to do with their aging loved one who needs help. Well, there is a solution, a company that provides care and assistance to make your loved one feel right at home. At Right at Home, their mission statement is to improve the quality of life for those they serve. They offer extensive services, personal and companion care, safety supervision and transportation, fall prevention, dressing and bathing assistance, medical reminders, meal prep, hospice support, ambulation support, stroke recovery, Parkinson's support, the list goes on and on and on. If you have an aging loved one that needs help, call Right at Home. Most people prefer to age in their home rather than moving to an assisted living or nursing home. Right at Home can make this happen. Contact Right at Home at rightathomnlc.com or give them a call, 847-984-0103. Now back to the show.
All right, never been arrested, you don't wear jeans and you like gas station sandwiches?
I do.
You see, you think I learned nothing every day?
Now you've got it.
I'm like, my weekend's done.
And now people are going to be affirmed that the people who like gas station sandwiches are going to be, hey, look, somebody else likes a gas station sandwich, right?
And Stephen has a story to tell.
That's right.
And he does.
That's right.
Um, have you ever met a celebrity?
I, uh, yes.
Who?
Uh, Princess Diana.
No way.
So she visited Northwestern University, um, uh, it was probably a year or a year and a half before her accident.
Wow.
Um, and she was, uh, walking across the campus with the president of the university. They had come from one event and of course they were going to another event. Um, and naturally everybody was lined up across the main quad area.
Yeah.
And we were all standing, we were there, so it was, it was, it was managed, so we were all able to be along the line and, you know, she just came straight down the line and, and shook hands and, and nodded with people and it was fantastic. And, and she shook hands and we made eye contact, brief. No conversation.
No, but that's cool.
But you have that, you have that one, and then it was a, what was, probably 90, yeah, 97 was it, I think, maybe, or a year or two later?
Yeah.